The time of six p.m. arrived, so I would call this meeting to 1:00. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, equal and free and just as well.
Okay, third item is agenda item is to establish a form, Julie?
We have a form.
Item number four, approve the agenda, change sequence and removal of items. I have a removal of item under 10, discussion items only. Item A, legal counsel. I'd like to remove that item and put it on for next. Come on. Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the change. Also, a motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as changed, all in favor. I oppose. Motion here, Carrie. Announcements, we have our student representatives. Could, I would like to ask, and you can keep going up there, but I'd like to ask if you could start with slide number four.
Number four?
Yeah, number four, and then go back to one and two and three. So, yeah.
So we now are coming up for Christmas mostly. Tonight, actually right now, there is a winter concert where the band requires from fifth through 12th grade will be performing this Friday evening. The physical theater program will be performing a Christmas carol right over there in that theater, so I want to check it out. I know they're working really hard. And then on December 20th, we will be taking a high school school trip to the Marshall movie theater to watch a Christmas movie together. We did that last year and it was a lot of fun, so we're hoping to bring it back. And then Christmas break, I know you're all looking forward to it, so.
And then we obviously have been doing the Christmas shop. We've been doing it for many years, but we got featured on Newsline 9 this year, which was kind of cool. Christmas shop opens in elementary school. Give study by the community that kids can buy for their family. All proceeds are going to be made back to the local community issue, so.
But I would like to add that they actually, they made so much this year. They actually split the donation part that's going to be going back to the providing of the Panthers Fund as well within the school that provides for students within the school.
Yeah, and then, yeah, then go back to number one.
All right, so our boys basketball started playing games last week and they started off with a strong lead of two and all, which is good for the season. Their this week's schedule will be Tuesday they're playing away at Iowa-Scandinavia and then Thursday they're playing home against Olive Baker, which will be good games for them.
And then our girls' basketball, we started off the season playing some tough competition. We played the number one in the state for D4 and D5. So we are three and two currently. We participated in the Cranberry Classic and our schedule this week is tomorrow track running at home and then Friday away at Olive Baker.
And if you've noticed, on our social media pages, we've started doing game day posts to kind of promote the games more, get more people to attend.
We actually hired a professional person.
Yeah.
It depends on what sort of skills.
I like it.
And then our wrestling, our wrestling had a tournament this Saturday in Laker Falls. They had two wrestlers in place and the schedule to speak is Tuesday, Thursday they're away at Nami Indian and then Saturday they have a tournament.
Any questions for our student representatives? Okay. Thank you. Okay, item number six is celebrations.
The celebration, they kind of stole my thunder, but rightfully so. It was the Christmas shop rousing success, the most money made. They actually surpassed their totals in previous years after two days with it. Credit to Ron Klein for, he's the guy who makes happen dozens of volunteers, both staff, students and community members to make that operate. And I'll tell you, it's such a neat and unique thing to allow the kids to be able to come in there and the smile on the kid's face has been able to buy something for a quarter. And there's some nice stuff that's available and there's some, this isn't like, you know, where it's like junk, it's, there's some nice things that kids get to pick up and the money all goes back in communities, which makes it even more special. So, and I also would love to, I have two kids playing in the concert tonight. I'm eager to hear feedback because we're pretty excited about it. As we said, we feel like we've kind of turned a corner with our annual program programs and first concert tonight, so we're excited to see how that goes for everyone.
Good deal. Item number seven is our 2324 audit presentation. Remember?
Good evening. So I'm going to briefly go through the balance packet document, just a select number of pages. But if you have questions on any of the other pages that I don't go through, just let me know and go talk through it. So if you want to go just past the table of contents, this is the independent auditor's report. This letter is about four pages long and just summarizes various things, but most importantly, and why I took the beginning, is our audit opinion. So right at the top there, it says, in our audit, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining funded information of the district as of June 30th, 2024. What this means is we didn't find as a result of our testing anything that was materially misstated or incorrect that would have led us to actually have to change how we approached our audit or give a modified opinion. This is quote unquote that clean opinion that you always strive for. We do our audits following generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards. And then this year, we also do the federal single audit. Again, the district spent over $750,000 of funds. And so we tested federal programs and state programs. Because in the state of Wisconsin, when you have a federal single audit, a state single audit kicks in. We're one of the few states that there's not, not every state has that requirement. So Wisconsin is a little unique that way. And as I said, the results of our testing didn't result in anything materially misstated. What we do, we do a risk-based audit. We step back, we talk to Pam, we talk to various people throughout the district and determine what went on during the year. What kind of activities did you have? You know, was up there a lot of construction? Was there a lot of debt? Was it just a status quo kind of year from there? And we understand there was changes for whatever reason. And whenever we sign our class, we take samples of tests. We don't test every single transaction, but we take a sample. So we might pick 40 payroll, we might pick 25 receipts, something like that. And it might vary from area depending on, so we might do a little bit more food service or we might do a little bit more community service. It varies based on what we do in our planning. And so ultimately, all of that culminates in this fourth page document. I will say that this year for 202324, there was one new accounting standard that went into effect. It wasn't very significant at all, not like some of the other ones of the past two years, releases and everything else that resulted in changes. But what it did is if you have a fund that either has a lot more revenue or expenses this year than it might have had last year, or maybe one goes back and forth, they could, the new standards call that a changed reporting entity. Even though nothing really changed, you still had the same number of funds, it just means it kind of became more significant to your overall financial statements. That happened this year and because of that happening, we had to show, there's a little extra footnote that says, okay, last year, this fund was in this other remaining funds column. And this year now it's spread out. And I'll show you how that looks on your financial statements. It didn't change anything on how we necessarily tested anything, but it is just something that gets pointed out because if you wouldn't put this set of financial statements next to last year's financial statements, you might have noticed that, hey, this fund last year was only back on page 77 and now it's up front. And that's what this footnote is trying to explain. But I'll point out how that looks in there. But always, that was the only major thing that changed in these financial statements compared to prior year. With that then, I'm going to move into some financial information. So if you move to page eight. Page eight is your balance sheet, so your assets and liabilities as of June 30th, 2024. And you'll see that right there in the middle is your general fund. So this is fund 1027. Your, the accounting rules make 10 and 27 have to be shown together, even though DPI makes you track them separately. But so ultimately, you know, that's your main operating fund. You had just under $2.4 million in total assets. 1.3 million of that is cash investments with $704,000 coming in as taxes receivable, which was then received in August. You had liabilities of just about a million dollars. One of the bigger changes this year in your liabilities was you had that short-term debt payable. So that's that $400,000, that's that short-term cash flow borrowing that was done. So that gets shown on an O line there at the top there. And then the remaining significant balancing liabilities is your Q other funds. This is the amounts that maybe everybody collected in your general checking, but then if you transfer to, you know, one of your other checking account or savings accounts, maybe with fund 21 or any of the other kind of things that way. Just a balancing kind of account. The net difference of those is your fund balance. You have $1.3 million in total fund balance. $88,000 was in non-settled, so this is your inventory prepaid. This is going to be the stuff that you may have prepaid for your property insurance in June, but it doesn't take effect until July. So it's that kind of stuff. It's basically already set, so, you know, you can't really use it to help cover expenses going forward. For restricted, there was just about $1,000 there. This is when a third party such as DPI gives you funds that says you can only spend it on X, Y, Z. You have to track what's left on those balances and report to them what's left. This can happen whether it's DPI or donor, third-party donors, anything along those lines. The remaining amount of $1.2 million is your unassigned fund balance. And you will see that that is a decrease from last year if you would compare back to last year's financial statements. Part of that was the district planned on spending some of the fund balance. If you look at your, if you go back to last year's budget adoption, you had planned on spending a couple hundred thousand dollars. So you kind of knew that that was going down there. One of the benchmarks we look at with unassigned fund balance is what percentage of expenditures is that? Thinking that in theory, if you didn't get revenue for X number of months, which kind of happens here in school districts, you don't get a lot of your shared revenue or anything for months to come. How much, do you need a short-term borrower or not? And that's where this threshold comes in. And you, the district itself has a policy of 20% of those current year expenditures is what your policy should be. You are below that now this year with this amount, you're at, which is about 13%. But obviously, the district has been addressing that through going through the referendum and as you got to the next study, you know, you took care, you know, you've addressed that, you have short-term borrower, you would be too. Industry-wide, we always just kind of recommend somewhere between 15 and 25% for that ratio to be looked at. So you're not necessarily that far off from what we would look at, but obviously below your internal policy. But we also, and you're not alone with other districts having a short-term background. Any questions on the general fund's balance sheet? So then your long-term capital improvement in fund 46, that's that next column over. You had just under $340,000 in cash and fund balance you set aside for future capital projects. And then the other governmental funds, that column is your debt service fund, your fund, or your community service fund, your food service fund, all combined in there. And you'll see that at the end of the year, there was just $453,000, excuse me, in total fund balance, broken down into various different categories. And they follow that, those same rules. So if it's unrestricted, that means somebody else said he had, can only spend it on certain things. Communities, you guys have pretty much committed that fund balance materially. And then the, unassigned, the deficit, that means, you know, that fund's hurting and depending on where the revenues come in the next year, you may have to look at what's going on in that fund and address what's going on. Any questions on the remaining part of the balance sheet? Nope. Then if you move to page 10, this is your income statement. So your revenues and expenses for the year. And again, from the C formula column, format with general fund first. You had just under $9.3 million in total revenues. State revenue, you do the majority of that at 5.4 million and just under $2 million in property taxes. You did also another $600,000 in federal funds, which included the bulk of the remaining asset funds that was in there. For total expenditures, it was just about $9.5 million. And so that led to a deficit of just about $247,000. Then there was a debt service transfer of $64,000 made during the year. And so ultimately, your fund balance decreased $311,000. So here then, if you look at your long-term capital improvement trust in that other governmental funds column, you'll see down towards the bottom, it says change within reporting entity, non-major to major fund. That's that new accounting rule that I was explaining at the beginning where it's trying to show that, hey, last year that beginning fund balance was in this other governmental funds column and now it's being separately shown. It's just the way it gets to 100 once anything's like, anything like that when the funds change major to non-major to be shown. And then overall, that, as you will see though, the other governmental funds did decrease in their fund balance as well. Food service spent down a good chunk of its fund balance and then the community service fund also spent down an additional amount of fund balance. So overall, when you add up all your governmental funds together, you're at $2.1 million in total fund balance.
Okay, you mentioned the fund meeting. You talk faster than I can understand all this.
Yep.
Where is that? Oh, there's the community service fund, okay. I see it now, under other governmental funds, it says $455,000.
Yeah, if you go to page 59 in the back, that breaks apart your balance sheet for all those individual funds where it shows the deficit fund balance from community service. So it starts there with your donations fund where it has a positive fund balance. Community service there in the middle and then community service showing that that fund has a deficit of $8,004,25.
Okay, yeah, I see the $8,004,25, okay. So in other words, we, because the community, okay, major governmental funds. So that means we ran a deficit on our levy for the community service fund.
Expenses exceeded revenues in the community service fund.
Expenses exceeded revenues. Okay.
Then goes, if you want more detail on that, if you want to, page 61.
We budgeted that way though.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, doesn't mean that it wasn't what we did, wasn't what we expected, but that is accurate.
Yep, okay. Yep, 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 I see it there. Okay.
Are there, do you have any other financial related questions? I'll briefly just go through the two audit findings you had for the year and then I'll put up anything else. So if you move to page 77 then, that's where the findings are labeled out or spelled out in detail. There are two findings this year, and I talked about both these two findings in the past few years. The first one is segregation of duties. Obviously, being a small district, you know, it's hard to break apart all the duties in terms of various different aspects of the financial reporting. And so as a result, we report this finding out just as a reminder and our recommendation is always just be on the lookout for things that you could break apart. I know you obviously have the administrators or the bookkeeping assistants and everything, so you try to break apart things where you can. But always just keep an eye out for new opportunities or new ways that could be, could enhance some of those checks and balances that you have individuals have built in. And, you know, periodically just review them just to see if maybe there's a software change or something else has changed that might allow you to split apart something a little bit different. Not unusual for districts of your size to see this finding. The second finding on page 78 is the preparation of this financial report. So in this fund document, there's about 10 to 15 pages. That is the auditor's responsibility to prepare. The remaining document is management's responsibilities to prepare. But for cost benefit purposes, you contract with your auditors to prepare all the schedules and all the footnotes. And as part of your review process of these reports, that's where you were handed a draft copy, she looks at it, reads through it and asks questions of need to determine if there's something there. This again is not uncommon. I, every single school district, I work on seven school districts during the year. All my school districts hire me to prepare the financial statements. It's just something to be aware of because, you know, sometimes there might be a small little policy change. It might be that some of the wording in here that maybe we didn't catch because it did impact some of our testing kind of thing. So it's important to read through and understand, hey, does this make sense? That, yeah, we did plan on spending down fund balance. So this reflects what you thought it was supposed to reflect. Any ask questions that way? Any other questions?
I would like, like to make a comment, there will be copies of this audit available in the district office for any public community members that would like to access them. There will be extra copies available in the district office.
Sounds good, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2324 audit presentation.
I'll second the motion to approve the audit.
Any further discussions? Then I'll call for votes on the theater. Opposed, motion carried. Next, we are on to agenda item number eight, the consent agenda items. A, meeting notice certification, B, regular meeting with closed session minutes, C, the financial status with all of the reports, D, resignations, E, hiring, and that's it. Any questions from board members related to any of this? Okay, then I entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
One second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number nine, the district administrator's report.
You all have a copy of this, sent your copy that you can follow through.
Okay. In our.
Um, Deb, what did you?
I sent it, I thought, when, can it email?
Sent it to an email.
So you have it at the top here. No, I'll wait a second.
Okay.
So just kind of an overview here. The state report card is mandated by the state of Wisconsin. All public schools have a report card that's issued each year that's based on, want to point this out as you see this data, three years of data. They averaged the data out, so much like when you're talking about avoiding like big dips or hits. So it's, and it also rewards you for showing consistent growth or achievement scores. So this is the rating. The top rating is exceeds, significantly exceeds expectations, then exceeds expectations meets and so on. So I put a link below that's available to be posted with this on the website. Debby, you want to go ahead and click on that real quick, just so I can show. This is accessible for any, anyone who wants to go and get a better look at. I think I shared this with the board last week, to look through and what does this data mean? And we'll talk about some of those things tonight. But it's a nice breakdown for community members or parents, families and even students if they want to kind of get to know a little bit more about the report card. Okay? So, next slide. So the school district for the second year in a row exceeded expectations on a report card and our score went up to 74.1. And you can see that the areas that are on there, those priority area weights are the main impacts into how your report card is driven. So achievement, growth, then you have a target group and then on track to graduation. So I want to talk about what this target group is and I'm going to have the administrators jump in at various points here and they're going to elaborate a little bit on their buildings and on some of these components. So the target group is your bottom quartile of your students every year. So they take for the year before. So from the year before, they take the bottom 25th percentile of students as far as student achievement from the year before. They are your bottom quartile. So you're always going to have a bottom quartile that will be there forever. You get points based upon how that group achieves. And the idea is obviously is we want to bring everyone up to proficiency at some point. So you get a rating based upon how your target group performs. And we in all districts are able to then get a list of your target group students from DPI. You actually have to email DPI and request that list. They will then send you the list of the students that are identified in that quartile. And then the administrators and I went to CISA for a report card data analysis meeting last week, Monday, I believe Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday, the days were all. And what they did is they, they kind of went into the nuances of how could we dig a little bit deeper into this data? Because obviously, we're happy with the, with the scores, but I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that it's well-known around the state that they lowered, the state lowered the cut scores for proficiency this year. That was around quite a bit saying, well, wait, they lowered the bar. What I can tell you is what you'll see in our presentation is that did not have a positive or negative impact on our report card. Like our report card was exceptional regardless of the lower cut scores. And we'll kind of get into what that was. But the, there was conversations about a lot more districts are going to meet expectations related to the cut scores being lowered. I believe they actually did research and said, oh, like a handful of districts moved from one level to the other this year, like went up a level. It wasn't like half of the districts in the state or anything that did that. We'll get into our data to kind of talk about why that wasn't artificial inflation with our, with our scores and our data. So that's kind of what each of those mean. The on-track for graduation, on that at a glance, it actually gives you a list of what tests go into this calculation. Your graduation rate is obviously calculated in various things. So anyway, so the district is at a 74.1, exceeds expectations. Next slide please, Deb. I'm going to, I'm going to go through these quickly and then I'm going to go back and click on the link for the district because I want to show the board some specific components. So Pinspell Elementary School, for the first time last year met expectations, also exceeded expectations, 72.8. Score went up, I believe almost six, six and a half percentage points that the score went up. Next slide please. And then the high school exceeded expectations for the second year in a row, which led to the district report card obviously going up. So can you go back to the original and click on the district report card, please? So are you able to zoom in for me a little bit? So, so something I want to show you, when we're breaking down the data here, we're looking at how are our students comparing to the state average? Obviously, we want to know like how many are our students proficient in English and math? But how are our students comparing to the state average? Not that that is our bar, but it's a good measuring tool, okay? So a particular area that I want the board to pay attention to and I'll explain why I like it is the value-added scores, which would be down that vertical graph. I believe it's on page four, Deb. The one with the vertical line going. Actually, stop, let's stop on that for a moment. Go back up. The proficiency rates. Here's something else we look at a little bit further, the bar graphs, the colored bar graphs that were on there. I think you maybe skipped by. Go, go down again. There were, there were like colored, it was yellow, orange, bar graphs, one, all right. So this is something else we look at when we compare it from year to year is what you want, obviously, is we want those orange and yellows to get smaller and we want the, would that be violet? And the blue to get larger, our students that are, are showing growth. We have these new terms now, they call it developing, approaching, needing and advanced. They used to be fails, or not, what was it, deficient? So they changed the language, but effectively it means the same thing. So we want to decrease the number of our students that are developing and approaching and increase those other two numbers. And what we do is we look at data from past years to see, is that happening with those numbers? And the answer is yes, is those two, we're reducing the number of kids at the bottom area with a small caveat that Danny's going to talk about later as we identify areas like. Because our goal is this. Our goal is obviously we're going to educate students and this is one way to measure, but it's also something that a lot of people pay attention to. Our goal is to get into that significantly exceeds expectations. And I believe only seven school districts in the state met that parameter this year. And that is our goal, is to get into that category with goals that would put you in the top three percentile in the state of school districts.
So is that all kids or just a quarter group of kids?
This is all, this is all students right now, all students.
Is it possible on your, the thing that Deb sent us, do we have a link to this?
Yes, there's links on, right on that slide. There's links.
Oh, right there, okay.
Sorry, I should have clarified that. You can click it and take your right to.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so here's a reason we didn't put like, so we have other numbers. One thing they talk about, the change in cut scores, it impacts being able to look at like the last three years of these charts. But we have other indicators to show that our, our students are growing, are showing growth. That's actually one of our biggest impacts for our report cards, our growth scores. And the formula is different based upon your district, upon your economic status you did district. So if you have a district that is high poverty, we're, we're up there. Over 40% is up there. There are some districts that have more. You get more weight for your growth than you do for your achievement then. So if you are a low poverty district, you are weight heavy on your achievement scores because they would expect without having, you know, all the different things that take away from being able to come to school and learn effectively, that you should have higher achievement. So with our schools that maybe struggle with other things outside of the school to support students, but they give you more points to show growth. You want to show growth because eventually the growth is going to lead to proficiency. So, okay, Deb, can you go down to the value added? It'll be the one with the vertical lines. Right there. So this is, board, if you can go to that and I'll explain what this means and why this is promising. Um, so what that vertical line you see is, is a measurement of, that is the state average for all those demographics of students that you see. So if you look down, um, for, let's look at, um, white, students that are white. The state average would be that vertical line. Anything to the right of the line means that our students who are white are outpacing their peers statewide, 'cause anything above three is outpacing. So why we look at this is we wanna see if we are supporting all of our student groups. And once again, as compared to state average, if you look over on the right with math, why, why we were extremely pleased with our math growth scores, uh, proficiency scores is, Deb, can you minimize this so that, is it possible to get this where it's all? Where they can see all of them on for each of those? Yeah, perfect. Go even a little bit smaller, 'cause I just wanted to get the visual of it. Is, as you can see with math, we are significantly above state average in all demographics, all student demographic groups. Um, which, the important part about that is whether, whether we're talking students with disabilities or, uh, low SES, which is a big economic disadvantage, is typically an indicator, tons of research, that you're gonna have lower achievement scores. That's just the reality.
Right.
What this shows is that specifically in math, our students are outperforming their peers, no matter what the demographic is statewide with this. And if you look at the past three years, this has not changed to the point where if you look at the last eight, three years, you can see all of our students moving right on the continuum on this, which is the idea, is you wanna show growth, continued growth, building upon this. This is one thing we really kind of hone in on to the value-add, is a really important measurement to see how are we? Are there students that are falling through the cracks? Um, and, and we'll talk a little bit more about specifically how we identify more than depth if there are students falling through the cracks. So you can see the one area where, where we are below is our students with disabilities related to, uh, English micros. Is the only area that we're not outperforming the state average. Any questions from the board so far, just on that? Good? All right, uh, Deb, let's go and take a look at the same thing for the elementary and high school. Look at the, now I wanna tell the board, the demographic groups, the reason some show up for the district and not for the smaller schools is if you have twenty or less students in that demographic, they do not show it, because it would be identifiable. So there will be some that would show up district-wide, because we have enough students to not make it PII, Inferco. But within the building, the, the group is too small to be listed, so you won't see all of those groups listed on there. Okay? Uh, let's go down to, take a peek here, once again, we, we wanna see more of our students moving into that, um, advanced stage and meeting. We'd like to see that orange eliminated completely. Okay, so this is the elementary school. So as you can see, the math, pretty similar data, um. This list of not proficient, so you see it shows that they're not proficient last year. So what that shows you is, for that group that wasn't proficient last year, we're lagging the state average. These are the areas that we said, all right, let's identify yours, we gotta get better at it, continue to prove that. That would be one, is that our students who weren't proficient last year, obviously, to be, to reach their peers, students who are not proficient need to show more growth than, than a year's growth. That's how you make up that difference. So, this is not shocking, it would not be probably different for most districts, um, with, with their students who did not meet last year. That's a focus of when we get those individual student data, where we find students that maybe are just about proficient, or, or just about ready to go from, uh, meeting to, to, uh, uh, what, what are the changes emerging and what is it again?
About approaching.
Deb, is pushing them to that next level. We wanna move all students, but we wanna really focus in on students that are right, you know, that are right there, and then we can push them across the line to, to increase those, you know, those students that are proficient. So, very similar, the math, math, uh, score's not quite as dynamic, but still, we're on the right side of the line and continuing to show growth. Okay? Uh, let's do the high school quick, please. Okay, and as you can see, high school math was significantly above their peers statewide in all demographics. And the same thing with, LA is slightly past, but we're moving in the right direction. Those were, most of those were to the left two years ago. So, lots of, lots of other things happened, you know, this is not by accident. Obviously, focusing on, you know, the professional learning communities and on, on learning targets and aligning assessments to targets. This is very purposeful, we have highly qualified staff, and they've been working hard with our PLCs and working hard to support our students. Uh, so this is not, I, I wouldn't tell you I was shocked if I was, but honestly, I was pleasantly surprised and pleased when I saw the results. I expected we would show growth, uh, because I feel like we took data last year to, to a whole other level as far as using data to drive our instruction and focusing on tier-one, uh, instruction, which is just the classroom instruction on a daily basis. Um, and I would say this year, we took it up another notch. So, um, we're building on the things we are doing well, have been doing well, and then, you know, this is what organizations do that are effective, uh, is they identify areas that they can do, improve that, and then you would focus on those. So, um, I do wanna share one more slide before I have the administrators kind of chime in here and share some thoughts. So, um, and, and I wish I had known this before I shared with the board. I went through and spent five hours sorting data, because the actual DPI, the report card, like, site didn't have it. But CISA showed us how to go into Wise Dash, uh, and what we were able to do is, this is direct from Wise Dash. So I thought this was an interesting snapshot, because I had, three years ago, I'd set a goal saying, I would like our district to be in the top ten percent in the state of school districts when it comes to the report card score. Uh, I felt like that might be a three to five-year goal. So this is all districts in the state, and Deb, we're able to do sortable data here. So, what I wanna show you is, Deb, if you sort, uh, scan down the rank, it is sorted by rank. So you can see at the top, go way to the top again, Deb, real quick. So Whitefish Bay, ninety-four point three significantly exceeds, I was a little bit off. So how many, these are all the districts that, uh, what is there? Ten of them. So ten districts in the state out of four-hundred-and-twenty-one significantly exceeded expectations. So I want you to scan down, it's about this list, I pulled the list just out of curiosity. So, um, we are, now, I think that I goofed that number up. We're fifty-first out of four-hundred-and-twenty-one districts, which puts us at, at twelve percent, eleven-point-nine percentiles. So we're a little bit closer. So of, of the four-hundred-and-twenty-one school districts in the state, the Pittsville School District, our score as a school district, put us fifty-first out of four-hundred-and-twenty-one, which is eleven-point-eight-eight, uh, as far as the percentile. Um, and you're able to go through, like, uh, if you look at, Deb, over the right, those different categories. So like, if you look at district enrollment, this is something else. Deb, would you click on district enrollment and inverse sort? So it'd be Z, I believe. I'm sorry, it was the other way. What you're gonna see is, not shocking here, this is the districts that were in the top fifty-one, fifty-two by, by size. So you see that we are the, what, the sixth smallest, seventh smallest school district, um, in the top fifty. And you can see the enrollment of those districts that are below us. So there's several of us that are in that five-hundred-student range, um, all the way up to some of the larger school districts. Some other interesting ones you can do, and these are all linked in the, what, in the presentation for people who play around, who can add some of the sort. Find it very interesting, look at that, so sort by the roll scores, please. Uh, yeah, growth, go, go from highest to lowest, actually, sorry. So scan down. So we, we were in this situation, and it actually correlates with this, is we were, um, thirty-four point three for roll scores for our students. So what that's showing is, what's, what we said is, our students are growing at, at a faster rate than their peers, which bodes well for meeting those achievement scores that we did not get a score that we would, that we would hope to, right? We wanna see that go up, the achievement score. And the idea would be, as we get more of those students that meet, uh, continue that growth, then we're gonna have the achievement goals we're gonna, we're going to meet. Now, that, because of our socioeconomic status, that weight will not change, if that makes sense. So I'm gonna be clear when I tell you, raising our achievement will have a, I don't wanna say negligible, less of an impact on our report card score. The point is, it's the right, we want our students to achieve and to be proficient. So even though, like, the idea for districts that are of the economic status of ours is to show growth, to continue to show growth. But, you know, our goal for our students is to get where everyone is proficient, meeting, meeting expectations. So I just thought this was something interesting to be able to share, is that, you know, when we talk about where do we rank just statewide? 'Cause you, you saw the chart that I shared with the board, that I did a sixty-mile radius of the Pittsville School District, which was, um, I don't know, even to forty-eight school districts, and I think we were second out of forty-eight by the Stratford School District. So, um, this kind of correlates it out, that if you spread it out statewide, that, uh, you know, what our staff and families are doing here is, is we're making the growth that we wanna see, and we're gonna continue to build off of this. So, administrators, board members, please stop at any point, but I wanna have, um, Taylor and Leslie kind of give us some overviews of takeaways from their report card, and then kind of like what's being done now in some of the areas that we're aware we're maybe, we're needing to improve, and then maybe kind of what the future holds. And then Danny talking about some of our student subgroups and what we're doing to support those.
I'll fill in some of the gaps.
Sounds good, no pun intended.
Right.
Um, so I guess in the high school, um, you know, we are really focusing on our target group. I think the things that we're doing there, um, with our coffee shop and our life skills class, I think those are, are meeting some of those needs that we're lacking, um, or lacking for better, for, for better words. But I also think, you know, really looking at, um, you know, all the teachers have the data in their hands, um, by their core areas, and really focusing their PLC conversations on, you know, even for our solutions team, where that PPT time during our school day, of really working on some intervention piece to maybe move that, um, from developing to approaching. Um, you know, that's a half a point that you get when you move from category, um, or from, from developing to approaching or meeting, um, it's a half a point. So I put some data from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, um, and fifty-eight percent of our students showed growth from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four in math, and sixty-four-point-five percent showed growth from, um, twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four in reading. Uh, so we're doing a lot of good things in the classroom. I think we can take it a step further, um, of really focusing and honing in on, you know, what is being taught, the why behind it too. Uh, but I also think like our SEL goal of having kids involved, um, is, is one of the big reasons why kids come to school. Not only sports, but other things. I think our community does a phenomenal job of meeting all needs, not just, you know, athletics or just not, you know, theater design. Uh, but I, I think there's lots of opportunities. You know, you go to Polystiner on Friday night, there's four kids from high school working through, you know. So like incorporating those, those job skills and work skills, which necessarily doesn't show up on the report card, but also like your attendance and chronic absentee.
Taylor, can you talk about how that has an impact on student achievement, the chronic absenteeism, why that's one of the markers on the, on the report card? Importance of attendance?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, being, being in school, if you miss two or more days in, in a month's time, um, you're missing the, the instruction. Um, we pulled data from our, just our pass systems here, electronic pass system that we incorporated, and you'd be shocked of how much instruction time that kids have missed just by going to their locker, um, not being prepared for class, or going to the bathroom, or, you know, stuff like that. So, um, that, being in school and being in, you know, some of our classes are nine weeks. Um, you know, so if you miss one of those days, that, that's a lot of time. Uh, but I also think it's the connection piece and the rapport that our teachers have with our students that again, isn't necessarily, you know, on the report card, but it's why kids sometimes come to school, um, that report that those, those teachers create. Uh, we looked at our solutions team, you know, every teacher has at least one, maybe sometimes two, students that their focus point is, um, for the term. Um, and they're really encouraging them to one, not only for attendance purposes, um, but also like improving in those classroom areas. So they're missing assignments, really, um, honing in on, you know, just their, um, you know, how to, how to keep up with their work, whether that's their, their study skills, or whether that's, you know, organizational skills, stuff like that, which leads to long-term goals, um, in the classroom to help them be successful. So, um, I think we're doing a lot of good things, our teachers are, are at the heart of it. Um, but I always think there's, there's more, um, and they know that. Uh, this month, we're really focusing on our PLC conversations. I'm going in with those specific core area teachers, um, and really digging deeper into the, the data that's out there on Wise Dash, um, and what they wanna focus on. Um, so they're in the classroom every day, and I think that's also really important, to give them some of that empowering, um, feeling to, to, to dig into that data, so.
Something we found out at the CISA conference that they showed us was how Taylor tried to put those strands. It was, 'cause test data is test, it's kind of like an autopsy data. Like, what questions or what subsets, where, did our kids struggle on? So I'll dig into that and why we're trying to identify areas of instruction.
So I gave my teachers in our November staff, giving some of the pre-ACT, like, questions that were about English or about science. Um, and we're coming back next month to discuss, um, what is the areas where kids, kids lagged? And how can that be cross areas? So, for example, um, you know, if our kids really struggle with reading grass and charts, how can FIDE incorporate that in, within their FIDE program? How can our CTU program incorporate that, um, within their, their family conversations with kids? Um, I think that's really important. So our teachers are actually, um, going back together for the summer and discussing those, those things, so.
Think it together.
First time. To piggyback off all of that, you know, definitely our PLCs will take that time and go through some of the data. Um, I know math, like, our scores were increasing, we gained a new math program last year. So we just completed year one, and so now we're hoping that once teachers have, like, had a year with it, 'cause it's an intense program, um, to be able to kind of work out all the tweaks and everything to continue to increase that. This year now, we have a new ELA program. So our scores were a little bit lower in the ELA, but again, we need to take that year to kind of figure out the curriculum first, and then be able to, um, you know, work through it, meet with our teams, and see what is working, what areas still might need a little more, um, resources put into, and those kinds of things. So those are things, the conversations that we have all the time during the PLC. We're getting some outside help through our CISA, um, with some of those programs and things like that. So, and then we have Act Twenty coming. So I think when we get through our winter testing, that will give us a lot more information where are students that are in that lower quartile, like, what are those specific needs that may, that they need when we have, um, our personal reading plans that we have to implement too. So I think, and those are with our K-three, which for our K-two, they don't do before an exam, so they're not part of this. But it will lead into further, like, and sending out those three years of data, so they will be, um, coming, but we will have that. Um, our target groups, next one, I will, um, share out with our teachers, um, those students on those target groups. And again, working like, how can we help those target groups? What we are doing for those target groups will help everybody. It's not just specifically, we're only gonna work with these bottom quartile kids.
Right.
We're gonna be able to teach and do strategies that will help, but it's also going to help everybody else. So, again, it just, that growth helps those bottom quartile achievements and help everybody else as well. And then again, like, Taylor said, our SEL, you know, our, our goal is that they have a connection with somebody in the building. They're feeling comfortable, they can go talk to some, this person, and, you know, so to be able to have that connection, want to be at school, 'cause when you're at school, then you're able to, um, hear the lessons and take part of them and do the learning there.
And just to respond on that, I asked CISA, I said, when you see high-poverty districts that are typically showing lots of growth and achievement, is there anything like a correlation you see? And what they talked about with that connections was what they said. When kids feel safe and welcome at school and connected to school, that gets past that poverty, poverty barrier, and including supporting families, which I think this district does a phenomenal job of. Um, Elise Han, Ron Klein, our counselors, like, do a phenomenal job of outreach, uh, our principals and Danny, to families to find out, what is, what do you need? If a student's not at school, it's not, well, you're truant, it's, what's going on? Why, why are they not here, or is there any way we can help? That's really important. That's where you pull those barriers, uh, with the pop league, club stuff. So you can, and I can't stress that enough, how important those SEL goals are.
I agree, right, that the wraparound services that we have are exceptional, and that shows in the scores that we have for our high population of needs economically, socio-economically. Um, a lot of the things that we're doing this year as new admin, especially just taking a seat back, observing, getting into the programming. So we speak through an audit of the system, um, to see where are we at, where do we wanna go on this report card. And going to CISA has given us a new lens too, and been a great conversation starter. Um, a lot of the things that we have in place in face of the board's approvals for some of those, um, even hiring additional staff, like having, um, an in-house social worker, not a social worker, sorry, a school psychologist, that's one day a week.
Speak to them.
It's not just, uh, um, somebody who was hired out to do testing, so to speak. So we have someone who's best in the system, and they get to know the kids, and they're in the classroom, doing observations. Um, sometimes it's more than one day a week, depending how it works, making actually, um, get to know the kid pretty well, um, just by having that linked-in position. But that's allowed us to try to figure out how to support some of our students who are demonstrating communication needs, whether it's you can be there in a classroom, keeping them from acting. Or we're talking about, like, might as well hire human needs, and the wraparound services that we have. I, as the director of pupil services, wanted to dive into. I, as the director of pupil services, wanted to dive into one of our vulnerable populations and that's our special needs population. Does people show their report or the slide show? One of the things I was able to tinker with and learn from what we did, I assume so, is diving into Wise Dash. As a district administry, I've always been interested in the public portal, but having the access to this now is really fun because you can really dive into specifics and actually click on um, what specific students even to hone in on with, who created some of these scores. So it's, it's really interesting in that regard. But if you notice on this first slide, excuse me, I'm getting over and asked to call the past couple of weeks. So no, we're out. I don't have a coughing attack. We're good again. Um, but if you look up there, the blue is the state average. And this is all students, for instance, in third grade. And the green, um, sorry, the blue is.
Can you point or head up point? Cause it's hard to see.
Yeah, it's really hard. And it's so hard to get this on one slide in a way that's visible. I'm sorry, I tried. And I even printed it out for you guys, but it's blurry on paper. It's actually clear on the board. It's in sync. Um, but the blue is the average score for us as a district for third grade level and English, English arts and those different categories. So when we're talking about the PLC conversations that we can have with our teachers and really diving into the specifics, you can actually figure out like what areas are we lagging in writing, is it reading? Is it specifically about knowledge and ideas or is it the key and these details and we can type, tap that apart. Now this next slide, if you notice right there, we are above the state average in all regards. The next slide is students with disabilities. Now, the green, which Doug can point at, that's our state average. The blue is our students with disabilities. So while we know that our growth score is, it's lower for students with disabilities, when you see it on a graph like this, it's really stark. Like it's really glaring. Um, so the next slide is fourth. Same thing, we're above the state average for all students put together. Next slide is students with disabilities. You see those gaps. Sixth grade is the next grade. We're above for everybody together. When we just look at students with disabilities, there's those gaps again. Now the interesting thing is seventh grade, next slide, we're above for all of the areas, students with disabilities are also above. So like looking at this data, it just starts, gets the questions going and talking with teachers and what are we doing at the sixth, seventh grade level or tapping into the students. And there are quite a lot of population of students that represent this too. It's not just one student, it's not just two students, it's not just three students. It was a good chunk of students that represent these, these numbers up here. So it's just, it's really interesting. Seventh grade is.
Guys, for reference for the board, do you remember the number that when we talked about that bottom quartile, I want to be clear? That is not all students with disabilities.
No, it's not.
Do you remember what percentage it was? So, so it was not, um, I thought it was just less than half of the students, students with disabilities. So half of those students in our bottom quartile do not have disabilities. So I think maybe there were, there were some assumptions in some areas that like that would just be your students with disabilities.
It's not.
Quartile. That is not the case. So I just wanted to clarify with that.
Nope. Uh, but when we're looking at the report card too, and if we're looking at the ability to jump points with our state report cards, if we can show growth in the areas that have our minority or that vulnerable population, that's where the points are really rank out there. Um, so eighth grade is the next one. Simone Chimes, students without disabilities. Below, below the standard. So I don't want to be the dead horse, but what are we doing about it? Right? That was the next question. We see the need, what are we doing about it? Um, a lot of the conversations that we have are taking inventory of our current programs in place with students with disabilities. Um, I didn't realize that we were in procedural compliance year until, um, it was September. I'm like, oh, yay, new trajectory. I get to navigate this for the first time. It's going to be great. So I am a special education department. Uh, we did an audit of twenty-seven IPs, which was actually a blessing because we were all able to dive into them and really look at what DPI standards are. So next up is ensuring that all of our students disability related needs are aligned to programming that's geared toward their disability related needs. So if they're lagging in the area of writing, we're gearing instruction towards writing. If they're lagging in the area of specifically of reading comprehension, reading fluency, really targeting what those needs are, they can hone in on those. Um, so that's just one small part of the picture, but that's in place. Um, like Leslie said, we've got DI blocks that are happening in our classrooms with our new curriculum. So we have, um, great ownership of the general education teachers and special education teachers and reading intervention is really working together for all students.
Can you tell the board what DI blocks are?
Yeah, construction blocks. So you can assess your students, figuring out which level that they would need to belong in to receive targeted instruction at that level. So it's not the same instruction for everybody getting it once. It's individualized.
There's a DI block of bookworks. The new ELA resource has an actual DI block that helps facilitate.
Kind of like a workshop model.
Yeah, a workshop.
And there's like some testing to kind of figure out where your kids will sit into. And then that is specifically, um, taught, those skills that they're missing.
But they, or I do know.
So that's the instructional piece is really figuring out what, what instruction do our teachers need to work on those disability related needs? Do we have that instruction available, that curriculum available to them? Is it working? Is it not? What do we need to improve on there? Um, a lot of great things that we are currently doing as a district, but just some areas that we've noticed a different perspective, having to read your admin community. It's, um, things to try. Um, then the last thing, I kind of alluded to some of this is students and their communication needs, their behavior needs. Without behavior, um, having that support, the academics don't happen. So we've got a lot going on as a student services team, as admin team with our systems, our equitable volunteer systems in place and working with CISA and having our tier two and tier one in the classroom. So tier two is the next step. We have a lot more check in, check out going with our general education teachers and our students. I believe a little more TLC in the classroom, outside of the classroom. Like we had said, building relationships is a huge part of, um, really able to close those gaps too. If they want to be at school, they feel belonging, the learning can happen more. But without that, it's much more difficult. Sorry, I missed something, but.
Take any questions from the board? I think what I, what we wanted to see was, obviously we celebrated, but this is a matter of seeing the report card say, we'll, we'll be great. It's, all right, let's get back at it. We'll know what we're doing well and continue to show up those gaps.
And this, um, is more an observation and I'm very prejudiced with this, but I think, um, looking at the report card, looking and hearing what's going on in the buildings. Um, really shows the advantages of a small school where you really get to know where the staff and everyone gets to know students. And, um, are motivated to meet needs. So they succeed. So.
Not the biggest advantage is being on one campus. You know, seeing those, those from all the guys down in the low. And they, they, I, I can't tell them all their needs. They know who I am, you know, but they, you know, like that is super powerful to be able to be like, you know, I happened to kindergarten classroom the other day and you know what? That's not my building, but it's, it's our students. And I think that's really important for our teachers and our community understanding. It doesn't matter if you're one of, one of mine in high school or one of Leslie's, but we're, we're all together and I think that's what's really powerful. Even Pittso, I, um, yeah, I just think that that's, that's, I always strive for success. So.
Kidney graders can get to know you before.
Well, I learned something.
We'll be giving the board an update later after the new year, once we get some of that mid-year data. Kind of just a update as to where, how we're fitting in some of our growth related to the formative assessments that we're doing with, uh, I'm looking forward to some major growth in some of these areas.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Yeah. Um, I really, I'm gonna direct a comment to our, um, to our student representatives. I know this is a pretty heavy topic. You know, probably Alex last year, but, um, what do you think about all this?
I think that it is awesome. Like seeing how we compared to other schools in the area and how just we're growing. Like I didn't know that we were in such high poverty until he showed me his spreadsheet and I was like, it just got me, I'm proud of our school.
That was my consultant. She stopped her door. Sorry. So what do you think of this?
I feel like we can never tell, like I could, you couldn't just walk around a school and tell that we're in high poverty. So I feel like we have some amazing resources to be a small school. We have just such a great community.
I think that speaks volumes for the success in spite of potentially some, um, economic situations that students are like, I don't even, I don't even know who would fall into that area and who wouldn't. I mean, I think that that just speaks volumes for how our community is about all students and all families and some just potentially have a couple of extra struggles in that area, um, going on in their life right now. But the community comes around them. So it's, it's pretty cool that students don't even know that. That speaks really highly, um, for how everyone is seen as equal and.
He probably, to Julie's point, my weekly communication last week was about all the community resources available to our families in our community. Um, it's extensive and it's not that way in every small community, but it does make it special.
Any other comments or thoughts from board members? Okay.
And as I said, all of those, all of these documents are linked on the slides so that folks will be able to access that without clicking the.
Really appreciate that. One second. Very much. Okay. Big to the agenda. Um, okay, we're ready to go on to item number ten, discussion only items. Here we have, um, delay of A, so we're up to the last one, updates to policy nine forty to nine forty rule.
So we put this under discussion so that the board can kind of talk through this, not for first reading, just to kind of the discussion. So yeah.
So this is our current policy or this is an example?
This is our current policy.
And the current policy starts with as soon as the building was constructed. I mean, it was just an odd start of a policy to be perfectly honest. So I was like, okay. Um, thank you WASD, right? And you know, the Google Doc is, I was hoping that people would have an opportunity to take a look and maybe note some things of interest. Um, or things for discussion. Um, you know, I have an opportunity to do that. And, um, yeah, so if you go on that, there were a number of things that I had, I don't know, not so much questions about, but just kind of jumped out at me. And I'm sure that people had other ones. But it's really hard to read this at a board meeting. Um, so that's why I asked Jeff to put it in a Google Doc so that we could look at it ahead of time and, and know what's any questions. I apologize. I had no idea what you wanted us to do with that because there was no instructions on here. So I, I didn't, I didn't realize that you actually wanted this. And I looked at it before you made the changes or I would have. So I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Well, we need to get better at that then. Yeah, I just had no idea. That's why it was in here that way, because you actually wanted us to go type on it. I didn't, I didn't see that. Maybe just a note on the agenda saying, please go in and edit or make change, like just some notes so that like we would. I was just like, why are there three copies? I'm like, I have no idea. Well, and see, it was sent out ahead of time as a Google Doc and then it was linked on the agenda. Um, I think what, um, what I would like to stick out, well, first of all, we're going to be going over, um, the other one. Where that's down for future agenda items, the, um, where is that one? Eight forty, public gifts to schools and sponsorships. And actually I thought we were going to do that one first because to me it seems like policy eight forty, public gifts to schools and sponsorships is kind of the foundation for the naming rights. Um, so I don't know how much time we should spend on this today. Or if, if people haven't had an opportunity to review it, to really have a robust discussion, I would almost say let's put it on next month along with the.
The document linked.
Right. You link the document right away, but also I think we need to review that policy eight forty. And that's listed as the first, um, future agenda item. So I think what I'm, you know, some of the, um, like naming a small part within the building or something like that, that makes sense to me. But are we like, I guess I just had a lot of questions. I did go in and put comments, but like, are we actually considering naming our school something in general, like instead of Principal High School?
I would be, I would be strongly opposed to any of them.
Well, right. So I, my question becomes then why is that in here at all?
Well, I think I think we were looking for something like, maybe something totally different. Like if the market for kind of kind of basically million dollars, we'd probably, right? So I mean, because we're probably, we're probably more human rights or naming, naming something. Cause I don't know, like, doesn't Marshall have, doesn't someone name their gym or like the chips field house for a while?
That's pretty common.
Well, he'll, he'll, like, right. I mean, so I'm just, I mean, I have, I read it and I was prepared to give some general comments about like, are we like, are we even open to like the school getting named something or is it about, you know, the field being named and the baseball field being named and the, um, you know, tech ed wing being named and the, you know, but I feel like where it starts is like actually talking about our whole school building and the school. And I'm like, oh, I'm not sure. I don't know. I mean, I sample policy from WASD. That's, you know, where it has to fit everybody. I, I think you bring up a really good point, Julie. I mean, needless to say, my comments or my highlights didn't come in until we talked about facilities other than schools or areas within the school, because I thought that was the relevant stuff. So I certainly would not be opposed to getting rid of the whole buildings.
And I think the rule talks more about areas than the actual policy. But the nine forty rule will talk more about naming a area.
Yeah, the rule goes a little more into, uh, where do, where do I find that here? So we actually approved the document in. Someone did in twenty fifteen. Someone did. God, I wasn't on the board at that time.
Sure.
Cause I remember reading it and really having a lot of questions about it. But I was a, I was a private person. Sure. So. So how, how do people wish to proceed? Um, would you like to just dig deeper into the naming major facilities other than schools and naming areas within a school? Um, you know, and if you got renaming. Yeah. I mean, I just think the first three categories, I don't think are relevant. We don't have a charter school. We don't have a
New school.
A building that's actually named that we would be replacing it. And we don't and we're not building a new school, at least right now, or we wouldn't consider naming the school itself something else. Yeah. Unless we would. But those are kind of the first page and half of this. Yeah.
But you got to say naming rights. Would you be looking at a policy? Is your policy about somebody, like is a, your generation in the angle?
And see, that's where I think there is, that's that other policy, that eight forty, which I still think is really kind of the foundation. I really think we should start with eight forty.
Is that really a deal? Are you charging somebody?
Yeah. I mean, again, if someone, and it's not like you advertise the, of the CTE buildings for sale, you know, it's more like if you, you know, it, first it's cultivating donors. And if someone wants to drop a hundred grand or more, do you look at the do you look at the automobile area or the egg lab? Or, you know, something like that. So it's, yeah, it's not really. I, I would say the whole sponsorship and naming thing, it's not something that you necessarily proactively work on. It's more like if you're going to cultivate relationships, you need to have some policy to fall back on.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does. For like what period, what are the levels of the donation, how long the naming rights last? Like, usually it's not in perpetuity, it's like for a period of years based upon the level of a donation or gift. So I agree when you make a point that that is probably, should come before this, that's probably accurate, makes sense. That naming 40.
So we could like. In that entire complex, we only have one area named, don't we?
As far as I know.
The other term is the only area I can think of.
And there was no funds involved in that, is my understanding.
So do we want to put 840 in a Google, link it to the same document for comments and feedback?
I think that would be helpful so people could look at it ahead of time. And so then, you know, we could, we could come with more of a ready to discuss, I think.
How about David? Would you want to do both policies at the same time?
Um, I think there, there's nothing that's, I think there could be advantages to looking at them together. Not necessarily saying that we have to get it all done in one meeting. I think these types of discussions probably do need time. Because it's not like you're doing something based on the federal law or on state statute.
If we get it right.
Yeah.
You just need to get it right for your own, your own community. And, and I think Julie brings up a really good point about do we really need this? Even if we built a new one, I can't see it being called anything other than Pistol Elementary or Pistol High School. Unless someone maybe had ten or, or 10 million, 25 million? Yeah, at least 25 million, they're talking, thank. Fifty percent of the cost? Seventy-five percent of the cost? I wonder why John Edwards donated.
Well, I mean, there are some schools that are named, right?
Right, most definitely.
Where's Maun, too, right?
Yeah, me.
There are a number of them that are. I mean, that's my question. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but like, it was just odd the way it was written. It was almost as if we have to have this like committee in place to be able to accept. And I'm like, would we even like, would we even publicize and ask people to give us money to like take our name? I, I don't know.
No, first you find someone that wants to give you a hundred million.
I can bring that higher.
We might want, we'll take less.
But it's gotta be at least double a ditch of millions.
Well, is there consensus that we probably want to delete the first two sections? That makes it easier then to look at the rest.
One thing you might want to think about is if somebody were to say, here's a hundred thousand dollars, but I want you to change the name of your high school to my name, to make sure that's not addressed in something like that. You know, if somebody was donating, the only way I'll donate is if you name the school after me.
I'd say no thanks, but. And that's an interesting point. You could, we could have something in the policy that, you know.
I just want to make sure if you're deleting something that policy goes.
It would only be a gap.
Refer to something like that.
Um, we could possibly, I'm just throwing this out, but the idea of if someone would donate a minimum of 50% of the cost of a new building. Seventy-five percent, Leslie?
I don't like, I don't like deleting it. There's some stuff in here like the Travers School part. You know, we have one in our plans room, we talked about it recently, so it's not like it might not happen, it could happen.
It would be harming maybe here.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We have it already. I mean, if there's certain stuff we have to tweak.
Because it leaves the board's discretion. Like this doesn't.
I'll get rid of something that we may have to add.
Yeah. We better start.
Yeah, we can just skip those. If we don't feel there needs to be changes, we just skip those.
Well, they're mostly not applicable to our current situation. Like I would like, you know, four years ago, I would have bought one Travers School. Right, so your hard discussions could come up to a room for a second.
Well, and this is where it could be, and this would be a reason to look at both policies side by side. Because something, you know, for example, yes, it's an individual board's decision, but are there guidelines in policy? Like, for example, if someone would contribute 50% of the cost of a new building, 60%?
Hundred, 10%?
Furnishance choose. Yes, do their initial decision.
Yeah. Yeah, but that may come more under, the operational may come more under the sponsorships and donations. That's, that's where that would fall, I think, from a policy perspective.
I think, yeah. You know, and most of the time we're talking smaller amounts, so.
So we'll link 840 to this and then have the opportunity for board members to comment on it. There'll be no commentary.
Maybe 840 first and then see how it plays and just after that, just kind of keep it.
Yeah. Jeff, I'm wondering if what you could do instead of sending out 840 as an email, would it be more helpful for board members if Jeff would post a preliminary agenda for January? And have that as one of the few wide links in there, the Google documents?
I'd say yes.
You'd say it fine?
I think so.
Yeah, versus sorting through your email, yeah.
That would be great. I'm only at the January. Something else I want to share. I'm going to be in Washington DC presenting my national.
But, but you'll have, but with the Google Doc, I have all your input.
Okay, um, so this is going to be carried over to the January agenda. Both Policy 840 and Policy, what is this, 940? So, yeah, come prepare for a robust discussion. Okay. Um, let's move on to Agenda Item 11, Discussion Action Items. First of all, the Elementary School Safety Drill. I was just here to remind me myself what I meant, what I wrote. So we just did a soft lockdown, like we said, we started with the closed door and then moved into a soft lockdown. The total drill lasted nine minutes and that was where the amount of students and adults that we had in the building. I did talk with our building leadership team. I also put it on our staff agenda. And then I did morning announcements with the video announcer, kind of telling the students as well, kind of what to prepare for, what we were going to be doing, those kinds of things. And then, um, just once we had Gina Martinovich took kind of going and she went down and checked once we were in the full lockdown. Mary Lou, whose aunt did another one, and then I did another one as Karen stayed in the office and just checked through things. Our big aha was that the PA system does not work down towards our safety gym. So that, working with Mr. Betberg is working on how else can we do that until we can figure that out? You know, using a radio, those kinds of things to make sure that we have, if, if we would need to in an emergency situation that we could get a hold of.
Because to connect the systems would be, I mean, redo the entire PA system all the way through. It's not as easy as just connecting it. It would have to have an entire renewed system put in, which is astronomically expensive. Lobby area to the PA system in the gym. So we rely on walkie talkies effectively is what it is.
You can't hear announcements in the gym?
Nope. Never, it was never like, yeah, it was never connected. So this building gets high school announcement. Like there's two, two different systems in the district, so.
And then I just sent a Sky Alert to families, you know, just letting them know that we practiced that drill that day, talking with their students and, and things like that, and then also sending emails to the board.
Could you please define a closed door drill and a soft lockdown?
So a closed door is we just ask staff to close, the door is locked, it's closed, and students remain in the classroom and, but it, teaching happens, things continue just as they normally are. When you go into the lockdown, that is when you close the lights, you put any blinds on that you might have closing the windows, the outside windows as well as anything on the door. And then you move out of sight and you are quiet, so you do not remain teaching. And then you're just waiting to hear when it is time, like all clear is done.
So is there a hard lockdown also or is that?
See, that's what we're debating. So that's what we're debating, looking at our policy. It just says lockdown, but like a hard lockdown is like also barricading. Or, or it could be a high, flight, those kinds of things. And we did not do that. We didn't go to that next level. We just were practicing getting from the, the closed door into the lockdown and just getting that worked out before doing anything else.
So if you're in lockdown, is your only communication with teachers through the PA system?
Yes.
Wow.
But.
Like there isn't like, I mean, everyone carries a cell phone these days. There isn't some type of like group, like group something alert that would go to people's private cell phone that you could be communicating with people without.
Well, the Sky Alert would do that, that we have access to, like our, how we send Sky Alerts.
And according to our policy. And according to our policy, don't feel, we don't do cell phone communication because we need to leave communication open. I did share, I did share with families that students would not be on their phones and, and things like that because we don't, for one, we don't want any misinformation being sent out. And we don't want, you know, we want things to be able to, like, yes, it was a drill, but if it was a real thing, we don't want students reaching out to families and then parents showing up or things like that. We don't want those kinds of things happening.
Completely agree. I'm just thinking, I'm a teacher in a classroom, I'm barricaded in. And the only way you're going to be able to update me on what's going on is an overhead PA where the person that's intruding is listening to the entire conversation. I mean, is that normal? Like is that, is that normal for schools or are we missing something that?
And actually, having been Alice certified as a trainer in my former district, like I actually went and did the training to then train others. They actually tell you to be transparent on your PA system. If you have an active intruder is to announce out loud like where the location of the person is, like to be like, absolutely, that is what it is proposed is that you are transparent with your communication. So if you have an intruder in the, by the face room, you say it over the PA system, like clear and transparent communication out loud. So, yeah, that's part of the. So I mean, the answer to your question is that, yeah, I would say the P, we do have the ability to, any classroom teacher can get on the phone and dial in and make an announcement over PA system to, like they can do that in individual rooms, so it doesn't have to just come from the office. Just to be clear, like the, the office were to become disabled, an announcement could be made from any one of those phones in any of the rooms over the PA system with a code, which I'm obviously not going to say in an open board meeting. But we also do the school messenger, the school, those alerts that I send out, we have the option, there's a staff group on there that can go. And depending on what staff choose for their mode of receiving that, we can send, if they have a phone in there, I can click SMS text and send a text to any staff who will put their cell phone number in the Sky Alert. It gives me email, text, voice, there's like several different ways, but SMS is one of the options to both families and staff. And there's individual groups, so. Now, the question would be do all staff put their cell phone numbers in there? I don't know, but we would have other ways of communicating.
One thing to know, we are inviting our state of Wisconsin Department of Justice to come in in our March in service date. Kind of take a look at our safety protocol and so they.
This came out of us, yeah.
Yes, we went to the school safety training, so they are very structured in what they're doing. So we're actually spending a day or a week break and kind of planning it all out and then having them come to kind of do a live with just the staff.
Thank you, and thanks for sharing it with, I, I feel like when this first started many, many, many years ago, it was all like a surprise to students and I really appreciate that the approach is to not just prep teachers, but to prep students for what's expected because it's not about trying to catch people off guard. It's truly about people to know what to do if for some reason this would happen. And so I, I'm a firm believer that I'm not sure that this type of a drill ever needs to be like a, well, let's just practice like it's real.
Like it can be traumatizing.
Right, right. I mean, I don't think we need to traumatize people that way. We need to practice because people need to know what to do, but I don't think it needs to be like, well, let's see if you know how to, like, we're not going to tell you if it's real or not real. So I, I think that that is a, because that's maybe how it started in the beginning. And that's when people were like, oh my gosh, like, you know, scaring kids.
Correct. We don't need to create trauma when that's not, not necessary and we need to be prepared. And people really need to know what to do. So thank you for that approach. I really appreciate it.
So does the high school do this type of drill also?
We are doing that as well.
Okay. And you'll have a report to the board?
You betcha.
Wonderful.
I had honestly been, uh, making it first. It just didn't bother the local board for us, so that's right for us.
Okay, good. Uh, let's go on to B, which is the second reading of some policies. First of all, we have.
May I ask, we actually need a motion for that one?
Oh, to accept the report, okay.
I want a motion to accept the review of the written general evaluations of the interest of under on the 47th of the space centers.
A second motion?
It's been moved in second to approve or to accept the Elementary School Safety Drill Report. Any other questions or comments about it? If not, I'll entertain a motion. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carrying. Now on to item B, Policy Readings and Approvals. First we have Update to Policy 527.1, Employee Whistleblower Protections.
I don't have any feedback on any of the second readings.
Do you all base it on, yeah, I don't believe in them.
On any of them, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the second readings for Policy 527.1, 665, 672.1, 683, and 760 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion to approve this.
Any other questions or comments on the policies? Then I would entertain a, or I don't, did a motion. Let's vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carrying. Some first readings.
Some first readings. Um, item C, Updates to Policy 343.4 Exhibit. Um, the Parent Guardian Notice of Educational Options. This is the, um, the basic thing that DPI requires us to do, correct? And so it's just.
The updates are rated as on the report cards.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Um, and then.
The textbook classroom instruction and media, I actually called Jason ahead of time and just asked the question, like, these are all new, we've never had them in place. It's really just putting best practices in place. It doesn't necessarily change. My question was, will it change any of our practice? And the board still approves all of the curriculum, it all comes before. Like none of those things are changing. It's just giving some structure kind of around administration and the steps they take and teachers having good, having things documented, what they're using. So it's just putting some good practice in place, so.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation, Julie. How about new policy, um, 361.2? I'm assuming that that is.
These are just, no, these are just deleting because we're, we're putting the other ones in place. So this whole next section of one and two.
I, I see that.
Are just, are just deleting because they're going through 361 and 362.
So then your comment about the new policies were encompassing two, three, and four? Okay. Everyone in favor of moving those forward to a final reading? Okay. And then D, the, um, the cleanup work.
I don't think we can approve those tonight because we haven't approved the policy they're replacing. So I think, I think they have to, I mean, it tells us to approve them. I mean, I don't have a problem approving them, but I think we should approve them next month when we actually put the other ones in place and then delete those would be my suggestion.
Same thought.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. So we will move all of these first readings forward? Okay. Um, item number 12, Legislative Updates. I can just say that I know people in Madison are meeting and starting to formulate things. The governor has released his budget for education, um, which is a bit of a wish list. And we just need to keep our eye on things as to what's happening.
This is the initial proposal, and we'll be drastically different here before it becomes a finished product.
Yep, yep, yeah. You have to keep in mind, the governor proposes and the finance committee slices and dices. So any other things you want to mention or anyone else wants to mention about legislative reports? Uh, there has been some communication, um, from the district office to both Senator Testin and Representative Crew.
Requesting us to sit down just to talk about the upcoming budget and give some feedback. So we're working, trying to coordinate, including we offered to contract down to their offices and meet down in Madison if necessary.
Okay, and questions, comments? Okay. Um, item 13, Public Comments. Don't think we have a crowd here tonight, so I think we are okay on that one. And then 14, Future Agenda Items. Uh, we've already talked about the policy 840, Gifts and Sponsorships. Um, the CISA 5 Report Card Presentation.
Yeah.
This is where the CISA staff.
CISA, the, yeah, the CISA folks, they're going to give an independent analysis of my report card, kind of overview comparative to other districts in the state. Talk about specifically, we asked them to kind of touch on that whole idea of the lowering of the bar.
And that's going to be in the January.
January Board Meeting.
Okay, that is for sure the January Board Meeting. Also, for the January Board Meeting, we are required to, um, do the open enrollment space, correct?
Yep, we have that ready to go, excuse me.
Okay, so it sounds good. Promotion and retention will be ready to go as well as the reading and literacy development.
And we want to have legal counsel on today.
And legal counsel, right.
Do we want to add on to that also the Wasbe Resolution? Wasbe Resolutions and the penalty split contract. I would like to discuss liquidated damages, the policy on liquidated damages requested.
Yeah. That's going to be a pretty exciting meeting.
I, I will be sending to the board members. Jason said to send you, uh, on the Wasbe recommendations.
Okay.
Um, I think there's about a dozen recommendations, so I'll just send them all to you. But then when you give me your opinions on each one, uh, don't send it as a group mail, just send it back and then I'll accumulate those and know how we're going to be holding.
So then if we're doing that outside of the board meeting?
I was thinking what it might do is if you're replying individually, my thought was it might expedite, it's a pretty lengthy agenda already.
Right.
So that, then when the board came together in January.
We don't have to discuss, we just have to.
We've got to, we're just, we're just. That was the thought, was to try to save a little bit of time.
Rick can just identify if there's one that we can all agree on. So that would be me talk about, you can all talk about that.
That's a really great idea.
That would save us a lot of time.
That would. Okay, sounds good. Um, and looking farther ahead, I believe we're going to have a meeting set up at some point in time for, who was Jason, Rick, Chris?
Oh.
Um, to talk about, um, some things related to sponsorship or related to the foundation, establishing an educational foundation. So we really, we talked about scheduling a meeting for that in December. Um, Deb, could you send out a duty poll to see if that's possible in December? Otherwise, I think that's going to move into January. And I believe that, um, the building principals were going to be working on some things related to identified needs, um, for external funding. And what month did we talk about that?
February.
February, okay.
I remember thinking about sending the form up to staff in January.
Sounds good, sounds good. Sounds good to look ahead. Keep us on track. Um, if there's no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. This is not a hard one.
Oh, I have a motion to adjourn. I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Policy favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I always think that's so funny, you guys, you hesitate.